Mr. President, I ask that we remember all of those in our community that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way. Remember all those that have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers, specifically the family of Mr. Paul Gamble who lost a loved one recently. And so let's remember them in our prayers. Also, we ask our God and Creator to give us wisdom to make the best decisions for the citizens of the City of Erie.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting on May 1st and bills for approval of May 17th, 24 and 31. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Ryan Kutsel, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. And we go to repository sales, Mr. President.
Is there any request for a repository sale tonight? Any request for a repository sale? Hearing none. Brings us to citizens to be heard.
Good evening, Council. My name is Joseph K. Kerlett. I reside at 1708 Granada Drive, apartment 10, Erie, PA 16509. Council President Winarski, I'd like to pose a few questions to a couple councilmen, if that's okay?
You can pose the questions, but the questions will not be answered until our part of the where we have our committee reports.
Has procedure changed? I haven't been down here in a few months.
Yeah, we we're not an open forum type atmosphere. People come up, they state their concerns, their complaints, their accolades, maybe not so often, but then as a council we respond or as an administration, we respond during our committee reports.
What time is that?
That is normally following the business of the meeting, towards the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, all right. My three minutes started, Mr. Clem.
Time is...
All right. My first issue is the to Jessica Haran Kuko. Can you bring me up to date on the history of the renovations completed to Mayor's office in 207 as we have been discussing? The cost and reason for the expenditures? Mr. Winarski, what was the cost in man hours, dollars to erect the new pillars on State Street and where and what line item did it come from, the city budget to fund them? Where's all this tourism money coming from and why aren't our permanent jobs being created? This is a general question to all councilmen. How many city tax dollars is projected or set aside for rural on the shore? Is that event that profitable to the city in light of the fact of the backdrop and the problems it causes to the city? Trash, drugs, alcohol, vandalism, crime. Is it valuable to the city to have rural on the shore? I know you moved it outside the city. The city tax dollars still go into that project. Mr. Witherspoon, Councilman Witherspoon, as it leads on to the airport authority, please reiterate the reasons why Executive Director Chris Rogers refuses to do business with pride on this project because it's still unclear to me why they want to do business with my company. It's a general question to the council. What authority does council, this goes to the President really, what authority does council reps have as liaisons? Can they call and convene meetings? Is attendance kept on of council members making their liaison meetings and assignments? Mr. Winar, Councilman President Winarski, you get for me the last four years, 208 to 211, the gasoline outlays and overtime expense for the police department patrols, patrolmen. If this is an RTK, is necessary, please inform me ASAP. Mr. Mersky, Councilman Mersky, what was the result of your inquiry regarding the March 18 letter from Deputy Secretary Elizabeth O'Reilly, Department of General Services to Executive Director Casey Wells regarding minority participation on Erie Insurance Arena project? Mr. Witherspoon, Councilman Witherspoon, as we discussed over the phone, are you still in favor of voting to name the renovated extension to the mayor's office after the perpetrator of the... Why are you frowning, man?
Because it's my face and I want to frown, I'll frown.
You will become a part of that...
You got a problem with it?
No, sir. I just asked a question. You got a problem with me asking?
Your time's up.
That's Mr. Clem's job. Do it well.
Good evening, Councilman.
Good evening.
I must smile. I show you my teeth. I seen a man could smile way back and cut your head off at the same time. That ain't none of me, though. I have an issue here. It bothers me. Of course, you know it bothers me. If it didn't, I wouldn't be down here. I was approached a few days ago about a couple individuals. They said the police stopped them and they had to go up against the car and they made them drop their pants. What's behind that? Could you tell me? You're a police officer. You stopped me. Make me go up and get up against the car and make me drop my pants? I'm going to tell you something. That's a dangerous thing right there. That's killing time. Because if anybody do that to me, I want you to kill me right now because I'll be coming to see you. And somebody innocent gonna get killed. Somebody innocent gonna get killed. That ain't no way. I don't give a damn who you are. You have no business making them drop their pants. I wouldn't care if they had an AK-47 in their pants. They shouldn't have to drop them. They'll drop your pants. That dehumanize a man. You're no man no more. I've been a man all my life. I've always tried to live under the law. There's some laws that they should abolish, but I've always tried to live under the law. If this is going on, I asked you to put a stop to it because somebody's going to get killed. I promise you that. Because that's killing time, making me pull my pants down. I'm no longer a man. Pull your pants down. If they got drugs up in their pants, hey, if you don't feel them, they don't have them. If it's going on, I asked you to put a stop to it because you're gonna you're gonna have a lot of killing out there. Them boys talking about that. They're talking about that. I hate for somebody to come up to me and tell me something like that because it's so wrong. You're a policeman. You're supposed to uphold the law. You're not upholding the law when you tell somebody, "Take your pants down." Don't tell me to take mine down because I want you to kill me right there because I'll be to see you. I'm coming to see you. I'm looking to die. I'm coming to see you. Hey, I don't have nothing to live for no more. Take your pants down. I might take them down, but you won't like what you gonna get. If it's going on, put a stop to it. If it's going on, y'all know it's going on. Some of y'all know it's going on. I went up to the school board. That guy that shot that woman, if they'd have had some cop, I don't know what it cops be. We got enough cops to take care of this town. Of course, they bringing all them foreigners in here. They're going to have to hire some more because there's some things going to happen after a while. You going to wonder, "Why is it happening to us? Why is it happening to us?" We're bringing it in, that's why. I told you long time ago. I said, "What's happening overseas is going to be happening here." You're not scrutinizing those people. You're just bringing them in. You're giving them our money. I'm not saying y'all, but them big politicians down there in Washington and Harrisburg, they just take our money. Hell, I can't even, they took my kids off of mine and that hurts my heart because I worked, I didn't work to take care of no You look my record up and I know you done looked it up two or three times. I don't have no criminal background. Y'all look into this that I told you about now because you could save some lives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Winarski, Mr. President, members of council, in particular, Mal and Jessica I had the honor of serving with, I want to first pay tribute to Jim Clem, probably the most valuable person, no, not probably, most valuable person working for the city at this moment, decades of great service.
Ian, excuse me, could you state your name and...
Yeah, Ian Murray's my name. I want to pay tribute to Jim Clem. That was not why I'm here, but I'm always reminded of the institutional history of this building and how much a part of it Mr. Clem is and what professional and great service he's provided. One of the things I've learned in retrospect is that when partisan politics enters the public domain on legislative bodies, it's never a good thing. Probably not a good, was not a good thing that someone like myself who is truly partisan, democratic to the core and fighting for causes like that was on council. Although I think I did some good things, I think in the end, it's better if the political people step back and do what they do best. But I'm here because of that issue because I don't believe we can move forward as a community if we don't have the appearance of propriety in everything that we do. Regarding the towing contracts, I understand paragraph 14. I've dealt with these towing contracts on council. So I understand the renewal clause, even though I don't agree with it and I always thought that we should put everything out to bid, I understand the renewal clause. But I also think when there's exigent circumstances, you have to look and here there clearly is. And this is not a Democratic issue, Republican issue, but city council, county council cannot afford to have the appearance of impropriety in awarding an extension to a contract to an individual who's the principal of this outfit, who's running for county office 24/7 in the next year. And don't, and we can't even fool ourselves. We're all politically smart enough to know that he's going to take advantage of that, that he's going to be moving around. He, we all would do that. Council has no business extending that contract. That is why we, the renewal, paragraph 14, is optional. It's not automatic that we knew contracts. Now, if he was going to take a leave of absence or it was very clear to everyone that he was not going to be campaigning at any time wearing buttons, having posters on any towing trucks or anything else, then maybe. But I think the appearance of impropriety rises to a level that this council has a duty, a responsibility to table it and get it out to bid. They have a responsibility to do that. Not doing that is basically saying it's politics. It's the way we do business here in the city. Well, no, it's not the way we should do business. It's not the way that the mayor and the county executive are going to move this community forward, which they are, when we deal with Destination Erie and a myriad of other projects that councils in the city and county have to work together. But when you're reminded of something that's so clear, so obvious, so, the appearance of conflict isn't appearance, it is a conflict. So, and I can count votes, so, and so I pretty much understand that probably that I wouldn't be here if I thought the votes were up there to table this. I'm here because I think it's probably a four-three vote. But I am here ever hopeful that members of council reconsider this, at least table it to give an opportunity to really examine that so that, so that going forward, you don't have the appearance of conflict and it's clearly a conflict. I don't think there's any way, I think the ethics board came down here, they would see it for what it was. So why, why embrace controversy? Why embrace innuendo and hidden discussions? I wonder who pushed it and who's involved in this? And that's all what bring, what will bring this city down. And take, take it from somebody who made a lot of mistakes politically on this, on the board, on the, on the dais where you're all sitting. I thought I was doing great, but when I've had time to think about things, think about the good people, including the mayor at the time, who are really trying to move this city forward and I allowed myself to get mired in political obstinacy and everything else. But I'm here to say, city council's got to be, set the example for being above board, no appearance of impropriety or conflict, no political advantage given to anybody getting city contracts. They should be bid out and that should be tabled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My, welcome to city council. My name is Russell Phillips. I live at 318 West 6th Street. I'd like to thank tonight, City Solicitor Greg Carley for protecting the citizens of Erie from gun violence and out of town extremist groups. The recent shootings at McKinley Elementary School and Strong Vincent High School remind us that we should remain diligent in our efforts to protect our most vulnerable citizens from gun violence. Now is not the time to display assault rifles that are designed to kill people while we continue to be a city plagued by violence. Finally, I ask that you stand firm with Solicitor Carley and continue to protect the citizens of Erie from gun violence and out of town extremist groups. Tonight, they're going to refer a lot to the law. They're not attorneys. Our city's attorney decided he must have had good legal reason why he would say that this group could have their permit to protect their freedom of speech, which is a good thing. But he also said that they wouldn't be allowed to bring their assault rifles into the park, that if they did, they would be fined. We ask that you can, that you at least stand with the solicitor and let him know that you're, you are, you don't want to see this sort of violence anymore. And we could also, I've been in contact with several state officials. I've talked to the chief of staff of one. I'm not going to start naming them yet, but they're willing to come forward soon enough as well. They're gonna, we're going to potentially raise as much money as possible, my group, so that we can ask for the exemption that Philadelphia enjoys in the state law under Title 18, Section 6108. No person shall carry a firearm, rifle, shotgun at any time upon the public streets or upon the public property in the city of the first class. I know what you're thinking. We're not a city of the first class, but we feel like first-class citizens and we don't want to be treated any differently. We ask that you ask for that exemption, that you call our state officials, that you help us stand up against violence and that we ask them to help us in any way possible to protect our most, our children. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
My name is Willie McAdory. I live at 448 East 15th Street. Friend of Rehash, old new. And my first question is, did we advertise again for the fire department other than just in Erie? Did we do an outside survey to try to find black firemen to come in to be firemen? Now, with that said, the lady supposedly, we ain't seen her yet, supposed to have a black fireman, was hired in February. And from February till September, we was in here every week asking about the black fireman, when was they going to be hired? Lord behold, we didn't know she was already hired and the administration didn't tell us. When you knew that we had one and all y'all lied except for that Mersky spoon and the gentleman right there, but the rest of you, y'all liars. We asked you for eight months. You didn't know nothing. When we come in here in September, then you say, "Yeah, we been hired her." But check this out. A part of our history was lost because we did not highlight that particular moment. First black woman hired in the city of Erie on the fire department and you don't show her? Come on, give me a break. Just recently, you hired two policemen, a lady and a male. We seen them on TV. We seen them in the newspaper. But like you said, Jessica, that wasn't important. But apparently it was important because that's what the city just turned around and did. And my question is this to the administration. Black peoples in this community is not as important and you made history and you wouldn't show it? That's one of the most slave mentality tricks they used to play back during the slavery days. I don't understand what was up with that, that they never showed this person. And I'm kind of one of the believers, do we really have one? Ain't seen by one or two people say they saw her. Y'all don't think that's important to the black community that we know that we have one on there and what she look like? That's very important. That gave our girl something to look up if they had a seen it. And the people that's writing the black history in this community, I wonder how they gonna write that? How they gonna write that? How can you tell me that this happened this day and we didn't, nobody know nothing about it? So how's we gonna write this? No one seem to think that that's not important to us? It is important. Very important. What is the problem? You know, and then you stated to me that she didn't want to, that's not her call. When she took that oath to become a fireman, she was working for us, us, not just some. She was working for us. That wasn't her call. I can understand her not wanting to say nothing. Okay, cool. At least she should have showed the people the biops. The visual. We ain't never seen that. And my question back to y'all again is, do we have one? What is the secret? Why you hiding this person? It took us almost 10 years to even get y'all to consider to advertise outside the city to get her. And when you do, you mess that up. Then you turn around, you say, "Well, she didn't want to be highlighted," but these two policemen was highlighted on TV and the newspaper. And they said, "They work for the city of Erie too." What made this woman more different than them? What was the reason? Why was it a secret? Why was it a secret?
Thank you, Mr. McAdory. Time is up.
Hi, City Council. My name is Justin Dillon. I am the founder of Pennsylvania Open Carry. I live at 716 Boston Store. I come to you today over the situation between me and the city solicitor. I have my own information. If you guys are not aware, I've been in the hold of some of you city council members. I did get your phone call and thank you for getting back to me. As you were aware, you were brought up to a city ordinance which basically states hunting and firearms under Section 955.06, hunting and firearms. No person in the park shall hunt, trap, pursue wildlife at any time. No person shall use, carry, possess firearms of any descriptions or air rifles, spring puns, bow and arrows, slings, paintball weapons or any other forms of weapons potentially inanimate to wildlife and dangerous to human life. Any instrument that can be loaded with a fire blank cartilages of any kind or trapping devices, shooting in the park area and beyond park boundaries is forbidden. I'm going to just let you know right now that that is actually against state law. Title 18 PA Crimes Code 6120. Please take a note of this. I do have a copy if you would like to look at it. Limitation on regulation of firearms and ammunition. A general rule. No county, municipality or township may in any manner regulate the lawful ownership, possession, transfer, transportation of firearms, ammunition and ammunition components when carried or transported for the purpose not prohibited by the laws of this Commonwealth. Right there is plain black and white. It is an unenforceable ordinance. If that's not clear enough for you, I would like to bring up another part since Russ Phillips wanted to talk about Philadelphia in the first class. I just want to let you know that Philadelphia's crime rate is a lot higher than Erie County. With stricter gun laws, it doesn't work. In Ambler Bureau, Pennsylvania, the authorities were asked by ceasefire Pennsylvania and a Republican to get firearm ordinances. They went to their city solicitor. This is what the city solicitor said to the city council and the city council president. The problem I had with it was it was not legal problem to take action or the state takes action. Beeson said it's preempted by the state and local municipalities cannot make rule that regulate handguns. There's really no legal support for local adopting the ordinance. I feel very comfortable in that the authority behind it right now. Basically, they're stating that there is no legal support behind a city ordinance to do with firearms. Firearms in definition is handguns, rifles, et cetera, et cetera. You guys, if you guys want, you guys are more than welcome to petition the state to adopt an ordinance. That's up to you, but the state is above city council, townships, bureaus. They're the only ones that can restrict firearms. All I'm asking today is I wish that you would grant my permission to have this rally because I am covered under the First Amendment right to have my rally at the park. I do not need a permit for this. It's constitutionally what I'm allowed to do. The only reason why I have this permit was to give the city a courtesy that I'm having this rally. And when people like Russ Phillips or anybody else that feels that what we're doing is wrong and wants to call the police, that the police can inform them that they are aware of it. The chief of police have already went on, on air and said that this only pertain to hunting. I have never had an issue with you guys, the Erie Police Department, the City Department, the Streets Department. Of any of these rallies, I've had zero incidences and I would like to keep it that way. What you're doing is wrong and I would like for you guys to take the amendment out, the ordinance out because it's not legal here in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. If Philadelphia can't do it, what makes Erie can? This is already, an attorney has already spoken to the city solicitor, warning, action. I just would like to finish up by saying that if you guys decide to pursue this, criminal charges can be brought against anybody that enforces this ordinance, which it would be a first-class misdemeanor under 6119 of the state law. So I would really like for you guys to take time, even get back to me personally or by email and let me know by the end of the week where you guys stand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next citizen to be heard, please.
My name is Maria Chilevich and I live at 636 East 12th Street. First thing I would like to say, I mean, really Walmart, we don't have any... First thing I would like to say, I mean, really Walmart, we don't have anybody here in the city of Erie that does wholesale that you could have purchased and had someone from the city make money. And did it even go out to bid for these fire alarms? I mean, there is smoke detectors, but really Walmart? I just wanted to mention that because when I saw that, I just couldn't believe it, that you just went to Walmart and bought these things. Should have went out to bid, should have been a wholesale. I mean, you can even go on DH Gate and probably get them for a whole lot less than you paid Walmart at retail. But what I'm here to speak about tonight doesn't have so much to concern city council, but it does concern the citizens of Erie. And this has to do with Erie County Prison. Unfortunately, my son is stupid, and he got himself incarcerated, okay? When he called me, I could not accept his phone call. So I called this company, Securus, on three different occasions prior to accepting any call from him. So I did, and they wanted a credit card on file and this and that, so I did all that so that he could call me. And according to what I was told at the jail, that it should have been $1.70 to connect and five cents a minute. But anyway, this company, Securus, when the minutes are up, they say, "Do you want to add more money to your card so that he can, you know, they could speak to you?" And of course, you're gonna say yes because it's your kid. But what they don't tell you, number one, is that they charged me $6.95 to hook it up. And they didn't tell me when I paid that money to Securus, which my credit card is on Securus file, that they transferred it over to another company called telecommunications out of Boca Raton, Florida. And they allowed them and paid them $14.99 with my credit card. As far as I'm concerned, that's fraud. They have no right, and I want citizens of Erie to know this, they have no right to use my credit card to exchange it to another telecommunications when I am dealing with Securus. So I have written the Attorney General, I notified county council, and I thank every citizen in the city of Erie and whoever they know outside in the county that have been charged $14.99 for a phone call through TelMed or Altel or whoever the company that they've done this with, with your credit card. You did not give them permission with your credit card to pay anybody else. And it's supposed to be $1.74.05 a minute, not $14.99 for 20 minutes. And if you only talk for five minutes, that cost you $14.99. That is completely wrong. It needs to be dealt with by county council since they govern over county prison. But I want the citizens of Erie to be aware that they probably don't know this has happened to them. And it's exploitation of the families. That's the most important issue here. It's exploitation of the families. We are not the ones that committed crime. We are not. The only thing we want to do is make sure that our child is okay and he can get food and whatever within the prison. Thank you.
My name is Renee Vendetti, 1930 East A Street. I'm not gonna complain or nothing. I'm happy that you have televised meetings, and I was wondering if you would graciously offer county council this room to use till they get televised ready to have their meeting so the public can see what's going on at their meetings? Or allow them to piggyback off your channel the days that you're not using it so at least they could start with the city till they can get in the county for people to see what's going on at their meetings? So I'd appreciate it if yous could talk to them and allow them the opportunity to have their meetings televised and use this room. Thank you.
Ken Presipierski, 640 East 12th Street. Evening council, evening citizens. A lot of new faces, a lot of people that don't know who I am. Those of you who do know who I am, you know that I lay the truth on the table for all to question its authenticity. Many ask if I'm for real, but what I'm about to tell you is also very true. You know, you follow the truth, it will prevail. After a three-year hiatus, and I'm back, and I know one thing, and it's written, that humility comes before honor. You know, he that follows after righteousness and mercy finds life, righteousness and honor, and honor in God's eyes. You people serve the community. I've been attending county council meetings for many years. I just returned to speak on a very important issue concerning drug and alcohol fund money. Now, they receive $5.5 million every year for the drug and alcohol fund. Now, $250,000 goes for administrative costs and $4.8 million goes for purchase services. I spoke probably over three minutes. I laid it out. As you people know me, over the years, I crunched the numbers. Over 15-year period, they spent over $82 million on drug and alcohol rehabilitation. I know we have Gredenzia. We used to have the care management at UPMC Hospital. Funny how the hospital authority and all those properties changed. My point being, there's purchase services here at a tune of $4.8 million a year, if not more. Gredenzia is pretty much a court-ordered facility. It's kind of terrible when a law officer has to take, first he testifies to us that he has to take his child out, 19-year-old man, out onto the streets, buy him drugs, inject them into him before they'll take him at Mill Creek Community Hospital. There are no treatment facilities. There used to be Serenity West and the caring unit. Hospitals don't want to touch this stuff. Where are the $4 million in purchase services? Well, when I spoke at county council, this is what came back. Ken questioned the drug and alcohol fund, noting that a great deal of money has been spent, and there are still issues relating to drug use. Five sentences on their printed minutes after they approved them. This is a great forum we have here where we can say what we want, speak our piece, and it publicly gets heard. These people need to be televised like the woman spoke earlier. If you people were gracious enough to invite them to sit in your seats until they made that courthouse room, camera-ready, ran a cable three blocks, did a feed. You guys do your meetings on Wednesdays, they do theirs on Tuesdays. This could be done until they get that ready. They spent $9 million Homeland Security money getting the building digitally capable. They could podcast. Why don't they want visibility? Because they push a $380 million budget a year. Their general fund budget is $88 million. That's more than your entire budget. Nobody knows what they do with this money. Did you guys know December, $25 million bond issue? They're sitting on $29 million of uncommitted funds. Strap on your seatbelts, people. Want me to tell you what they do with the gaming money? 1% restricted funds. There's $5 million out there. They let somebody put in a bid for it, they get $500,000. The other $4.5 million becomes unrestricted funds to do whatever they choose. High-time peoples knew what they were doing with $380 million. Thank you.
My name is Joseph Honan. I live in Grenada Apartments in Mill Creek Township. I'm not gonna be pretentious enough to even allude that I know a whole lot about the law. But I do know how the streets are. I have lived in other places where there's been a lot of violence, and I know that gun violence has been on the rise nationwide for several decades with ebbs and tides, I mean ebbs and tides, in the violence. And I've been living up here in Erie for four years, and I've seen the violence and bloodshed increase from when I moved up here in '09. And to me, it's a troubling trend because I moved from Richmond, Virginia, where it was for 10 years running off and on between number one per capita to number three per capita for murders within that city. That city is about twice the size of Erie. Now, my issue, it's come to my attention that there are some groups that would like to see open carry possession of guns in Perry Square. And granted, this is a small park, which is especially why it draws alarm to me. Because if it were a park where there may be wild animals or some kind of a, you know, something that could attack your child, right? Like if it was a place where people camped or it was the woods. But this is a little park in the middle of a town, in the middle of a city where people bring their children to. I don't really have much of an opinion or one that I really want to express about the group that wants to have a gun rally there. But what really brings alarm to me is what might be the root motive, and which has already been expressed, that they would like be able to carry open carry and concealed weapons into the parks. But I just don't think, although I haven't seen other people address it much, but I don't think that I'm alone in feeling that this could be possibly a potential danger for our children. And if, in fact, law-abiding citizens started doing that, then maybe a brazen criminal, figure he can just skirt by the law, would feel free to do that, which would maybe have more of a propensity to commit a violent crime, given that that were made legal. I just hope that, like I say, I'm not pretentious enough to say that I understand the law and how it works and how it's mandated. But if that's a city ordinance, I would like to see it upheld. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens be heard tonight? Any other citizens be heard? Hearing none, Mr. Clem.
We have new business, resolution by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Brennan, that John D. Wells II, 404 Andrews Park Boulevard, is hereby appointed as a probationary policeman in the city of Erie Police Department. Current salary of $38,466.45 for a one-year probationary period.
Mr. President, before we have the vote on this, can, Mr. Clem, can you just clarify the difference between why the police are hired by council and the fire are not because there's a reason why the fire do not come upon the council's agenda?
It's a civil service rule in Pennsylvania. The police department is hired by city council based on civil service testing, and the administration, the mayor hires all the firemen in the city of Erie based on fire civil service testing. We have nothing to do with hiring personnel in the fire department.
That's by law.
By state civil service law.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that question, Ms. Consol.
Voting on the resolution. By the way, it may look funny that Number One and Two were not appointed. They have not finished, for information, they have not finished their schooling yet. And they will remain at One and Two. They were passed over, and in a few weeks, they will graduate from school and be eligible to be hired as police officers.
One thing I might add, Mr. Clem, it's nice that all of them reside in the city of Erie.
Right. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Ms. Rand Cutsom, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky.
Mr. President, I move the balance of the agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second. I'd like to separate Number Four.
Separations. Number Four.
Number Four. Four and Five.
Four and Five, I'm sorry.
Any other separations?
On contracts, Number Five, that's been withdrawn, that was a previously approved contract. It's a three-year contract with Executive Plus, and I think this is the second year of the contract.
Okay, so they still have, officially, they still have another year on their contract.
They do have another year on their contract, yes.
Mr. Clem, voting on the balance, I would imagine?
No other separations, voting on the balance, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rand Cutsom, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Okay, that takes us to committee reports, Mr. Brennan.
No, we do have a separation. Five?
Four and Five. First one is by a resolution by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Brennan, that the proper city officials are authorized and directed to extend the towing contract between the city of Erie and Eddies Collectibles, 1039 West 18th Street, for an additional year from the date of June 3, 2013, as provided in paragraph 14 of the contract, providing for renewal of the contract for a period of one year.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table these in light of the information that was delivered tonight. Until I can find some more information about it and explore it a little more, I'm not comfortable voting with it, so I'd like to table it.
I'll second the table.
Just so everybody knows, Number Five, Mr. Clem, was pulled off this agenda because that's only two-year, he's only in his second year.
No, he's on five on contracts, Mr. President. Four and Five on their new business are both still on the agenda, right, Mr. Clem?
Didn't you?
He meant 500 new contracts.
I meant Number 500 contracts on page two. Any discussion, oh, no, no discussion on the table motion, voting on the motion to table. Can we make the motion to table Four and Five, Mr. Mersky?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, fine. Voting on the table, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Ms. Rand Cutsom, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Okay, motions are tabled, the resolutions are tabled until, I assume, June 5.
Just, Mr. President, just for a quick question about order, and I know it's passed, I don't want to bring up discussion. Once something is a proposal for tabling and it's been seconded, there's no discussion on that, right? You just have to vote on table or not, correct?
There was discussion, right? Jim?
On a motion to table, if it's seconded, there's, Robert's rules of order, there's no discussion on a tabling motion.
So appropriate time to make a comment would be committee report? If there was an additional comment?
That would be a more appropriate time.
Sure, okay, thank you.
If you disagreed with it.
No, just for the point of discussion.
Or agree, whatever.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, are we, committee reports, Mr. President?
Thank you. Ms. Consol.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things to follow up on. Mr. Collette was asking some questions of council regarding the renovations of the mayor's office. I did speak with Ms. Beck about that situation, and I was informed that although there was renovations done, there wasn't a large expense because they were done in-house with in-house labor. And if there was anything, I know Mr. Collette was looking for something in writing, and in order to achieve something in writing, and that would be requiring a right-to-know request to be made to the right-to-know officer of the city, which is Connie Cook. Am I correct? So if there's a- So if there's a formal request made in writing, then something will be returned in writing. The other item that I think Mr. Colette was asking about, Row Under Shore, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but as far as I've always known, we don't pay anything for Row Under Shore, the city is not involved. It's a private sponsored event by the Manufacturers Association, and they actually do raise some money for charity, but the city puts no money into that organization's event. Is that correct? Thank you. And couple of things for the good of the order. I have a citizen who calls me, her name is Pam, and I won't say anything more than that, but she has called me a couple of times, and I do apologize for not getting back to her, but I have moved from one house to the other, and I don't have her phone number. It's buried somewhere in boxes, so if you can leave your phone number, Pam, so I can phone you back, I'd appreciate it. And the council members, the cable franchise renewal agreement, which has been under negotiation for about a year and a half now, through the Erie Area COG with eight different municipalities working together to renegotiate their contracts with Time Warner, has finally been negotiated, and the contract will be presented for council at the June meeting, which we will be requesting that the solicitor's office to send down that ordinance for us, and also hold, we will be scheduling a public hearing so that the franchise agreement, if anyone wants to make public comment on it, we will take that at council. So it's been a long process. We have been without a current contract and operating under an expired contract for many years now, so it's very, it was always very important to me that we had a renewed franchise agreement, just to protect us in terms of any damage that could happen and things like that. And those are covered under the franchise agreement, and also to ensure that the revenue that does come to the city through the use of the right-of-way continues to come. So that should be coming up shortly for the council's review. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mersky.
No report today. We have a convention center authority meeting tomorrow, just wishing the citizens of Erie a safe Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, in relation to the cable franchising, or cable franchise contract, I know there's been a lot of discussion about CAT TV and how we're going to deal with that, and I've gotten a lot of phone calls and emails, et cetera, on how we're going to, you know, on our change in approach to dealing with CAT TV financially. I know we've talked about it multiple times as a council in caucus and study sessions and different venues. I'm not sure that we ever came up with a full approach or consensus on how, or if, we as a city are going to help financially support CAT TV. And I know that there's, I believe, I believe that there's an agreement to finish out the rest of the year as normal, and then there's going to be a different mechanism or different way of dealing with that. So I guess the question that I have is, is if we can just figure out, or if we could let us know if anyone knows more detail.
You want me to brief you a little bit now, or?
Just afterwards, afterwards is fine. And then I can be able to give something to those citizens, because I wasn't sure exactly what the nuances and details were, so. So I appreciate that, and I'll get that from you after the meeting. The next thing, we're going to have a waive the rules motion at the end of committee reports tonight, and the initiative, is this, this is okay to talk about this right now? Is that okay? Mr. Clem, rules-wise, I just want to make sure I'm in the hole right now, or should we wait?
The most appropriate time is?
Would be during?
After the motion is read.
All right. And in that case, what I will do is I will forfeit those comments until the motion is officially brought up for discussion. In relation to the EMTA, I'm able to, there are a couple of things, and again, there's going to be some more detail, some schedule changes and some location changes in relation to EMTA that will be coming out on how some of the routes are done and how some of the routes are run through the city. And so it's going to be very important that we get that update from them, and so they will be giving us information and utilizing me as the liaison to facilitate some of that information, along with our own marketing strategy on how they're going to talk about it to the citizens. And so that's going to be up and coming in the very near future. And so ask citizens to be, that utilize public transportation, to be aware of that, because it will, in a positive way, I think, in a lot of ways significantly change, you know, locations and drops and pickups and things of that nature. Mr. President, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Brennan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I attended a couple of neighborhood watch meetings. I attended the Robbins last neighborhood watch, they had a rededication of the park. They invited all the neighbors and had a really great crowd. They had a couple of bands planned. I was able to speak at the event along with Sarah Galloway, who represented the city. The park eventually is going to become a lot more, a lot better for the neighborhood because they'd like to add a covered shelter, a playground addition, some walking pass, and some additional lighting for some security. So they're definitely excited to kind of move forward and try to get funding for that. And last night, I attended the Buffalo Watch, Neighborhood Watch, Buffalo Road Neighborhood Watch. Some of their current problems are some of the vacant properties, what to do with them, some of the property maintenance issues with some of the housing, and there's some dumping areas along the railroad tracks that I'm going to look into further with them, to see what the problems are and see what we can do. We also discussed some of the several unused parcels that are owned by the Redevelopment Authority, and there was actually two Redevelopment Authority staff members there to kind of answer some of the questions on some of their programs. But we're definitely going to try to keep working with them to try to, try to answer some of their questions and make their neighborhood even better. And the last item is the, along with Councilman Evans, we attended the School District Academic Sports League celebration today. They celebrated 20 years of existence of the league, and they also had a, honored all the students for their achievements, a lot of talented kids there, and congratulations to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Mr. Evans.
I've attended a bunch of things the last couple of weeks, but I'd really like to lose, use my time tonight to talk about three or four things. The first is, Mr. McDonald, who comes to our meetings on a pretty regular basis, has said a couple of things at the last couple of meetings that really concern me. At the last meeting, he made the comment that one of the problems he saw was that people in the black community were killing the wrong people, which of course implies that killing the right people is all right. I don't really think he meant that, because he stresses that he lives under the law and he appreciates people who live under the law as well. Tonight, he talked about killing time, that if we don't change behaviors, we're entering into a killing time. Again, that kind of conversation is not helpful from a gentleman who obviously has a high profile in our community. I'm not defending the police department, if in fact they're behaving inappropriately. And I think that's something we need to look into. But nevertheless, making those statements publicly is dangerous. It's dangerous because it incites violence in a community that's trying to reduce violence. Okay? So I really hope that Mr. McDonald, who unfortunately is not here at the moment, would think twice about making those kinds of comments in the future in a public forum unless he's trying to incite the very thing he seems to oppose, which is more violence. Second of all, there was an issue brought up by Mr. Murray earlier tonight about a towing contract. Now, I take no issue with regard to whether we ought to have a towing contract with Eddies Collectibles or not, but I don't believe that the city or any government agency ought to base its decision on whether or not to contract with people on the basis of whether or not they choose to run in a public election. Whether they're Republican or Democrat doesn't matter. If they're a competent provider and they're selected through a competitive bid process, then they ought to be free to provide that service and be a provider for the government agency. They ought not to be punished because they choose to pursue public office. Now, if they use their contract with the city as a means of punishing people who do not support them and rewarding people that do, then that's a different matter. But that was not Mr. Murray's allegation. Mr. Murray's allegation was merely that they are publicizing their candidacy. We all have a right to be candidates for public office, and the fact that we have a government relationship does not preclude us from that. Our president campaigned heavily for public office while he was president. There's nothing wrong with that. Every president has done it. So I don't think we ought to criticize someone for having a contract simply because he's campaigning for office. Third, open carry. People came earlier this evening and criticized the city's right to have an ordinance that prohibits open carry in a public park. Now, you can't take a gun into the county courthouse, you can't take a gun into the municipal airport, you can't take a gun into the Erie Insurance Arena, you can't take a gun into other municipal settings because that's the law. It's not permitted that the City of Erie prohibit the sale of firearms. It's not permitted that we prohibit people from owning a gun and from buying ammunition. And no one is suggesting that we're trying to prohibit that. But it is within our rights to say that people cannot have a gun on certain public property when it's our right to determine that. I've suggested to the people when they called me that they need to address Mr. Carley with this question and determine whether or not the state statute applies in this particular case. What they would like to suggest is that any attempt to regulate gun, the display of guns anywhere is a violation of the state law. That is a very broad interpretation of that statute, very broad. So I think they need to examine that further before they suggest that we are liable for having that statute on the books. Finally, I would like to congratulate Mr. McAdory. I think your point about the firefighter is very well made, sir, and I support you entirely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President, and that's a good lead in, John, thank you. I would like the fire department, the fire chief, know that I am willing to sponsor a special invitation of 50 young women at the Eagles Nest, along with Bishop Brock, at no cost to them, food provided, and we have some grade schoolers, middle schoolers, and senior high students to meet the young lady. I have not met her yet. When it came up previously, my, the answer I received is that she just wanted to do her job, and I understand that, that's what she gets paid for, and I understand she's good at it. But as Mr. McAdory indicated, she is, whether she like it or not, is and can be a role model for a lot of young women. So if she don't want to come out in the community as a whole, I'm willing to set that up, establish a date and time, talking about about one hour of her time, and we can make that happen. And we just want the little girls, the young ladies, go out and talk about it and say they want to be a firewoman. I spoke with Mr. McDonald before meeting, before council meeting, and I gave him my phone number to give to the two young men that were stopped by the police, and I will talk with them. Hopefully, they would have a car number, of course, the date and time, so we can track down who they are, and we'll go from there. Mr. Colette asked early about the airport and what authorities do we have as liaisons. I told Mr. Colette that I have no power of jurisdiction to make the airport director meet with him. Under no circumstances do I, do I have that power to say, "You better meet with Mr. Colette." I don't have that. And that's what we talked about on the phone. And to this day, that has not changed. He doesn't want to talk to Mr. Colette because of some previous situations they encountered. And that's, that's where it's at on that case. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon.
I want to thank council for all their comments and responses tonight to each and all their committee and liaisons. I know a few questions were brought up, if attendance is being kept when they go to their board meetings or authority meetings, yes, and I know it is for a fact. Can everybody make everyone? I know for a fact I could, and I know for a fact everybody here can't. But you still get in touch with the CEOs and get an update on what may be going on that particular month at that meeting. Another question was brought up about our renovations downtown, the pillars out there. As far as I know, that is none, none, no city money is being spent on those pillars. That is all, Jim, is that state?
State.
All state money for renovations of our downtown, just like the Elephant Ear curb cuts, but we won't go there. But, but the pillars is all state money that was allotted to the City of Erie. Other than that, once again, thanks, council, for your due diligence on your job. And with that, I pass it on to Mr. Krotowski.
Just a quick report. We attended the police and the fire pension meetings, and tomorrow, we'll attend the O and E, and that's my report.
Thank you. Ms. Beck.
I have no report this evening, no report, thank you.
No report, thank you very much.
Okay, we have a resolution and a waive the rules by Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Winarski. Whereas the City of Erie has been experiencing high unemployment rates for the past several years, especially among our young men and women of high school and college age, and whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania poverty rate for Erie County youth ranks number one in the state, resulting in one of the reasons for an increase in crime statistics among our juvenile offenders. Whereas the Erie City Council wishes to assist in solving this problem by establishing a summer youth job entitlement program, by providing seed money from this year's general fund budget, while coupling this fund with other community organizations, thus creating a summer youth employment initiative to provide income to sustain their needs and the needs of their families during the upcoming summer months. So therefore, be resolved by the council of the city, that the sum of $7,000 be transferred from the Office of City Council's general fund budget to our general government account, and establish a 2013 summer youth job entitlement program, and request both public and private organizations to either contribute to this fund or establish their own summer youth entitlement program to assist our young unemployed youth in the Erie community with the means to obtain income to sustain themselves during the summer months. Discussion.
Mr. Jones.
This is, again, something that I, well, I guess, should we, should we vote on waiving the rules and then have discussion? So this should be a voting on waiving the rules?
I skipped that. Robert's rules of order, we need to waive the rules first. Voting to waive the rules, five votes are needed to waive the rules for discussion. Mr. Brown, Mr. Evans, Ms. Rand Cutsom, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky?
No.
Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Waive the rules, ayes six and ayes one. Now we can have discussion.
Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President. The, the effort tonight is to allocate and assign, set aside, transfer a bit of money into a separate line item with the intention of utilizing that money as a tool to encourage and initiate other organizations and groups in the community to partner with the city council initiative to put some of our young people to work throughout the course of the summer. This is an initiative actually just spurred out of a lot of dialogue around this dais and council, citizens to be heard have made comments, and, and so it was an idea that has come up. The effort today is not to quite honestly say that we have all the answers in how we want to, and how I would like to see this facilitated. So we're not saying that we want to release the money yet. We're talking about moving money from our budget, our city council budget, to another line, making it available, once the, if you would use the phrase, the meat is, more of the meat is on the bones. of the proposal, so that it's there, it's available rapidly to be used to put some of our young people to work this summer. Again, it is not my intention to try to rush anything or railroad anything. The reason I wanted to waive the rules as opposed to waiting for the next meeting is because if we have a, have the support in general of council to move forward with this effort, it's going to take some time to help to generate the revenue and to generate the funds, and so we wanted to maximize the time to do that. And that's why I utilized the tool of waiving the rules to get it up for a vote. Again, a synopsis of the concept is, again, to put some of our young people to work in the community. There, historically, and I'm a product, I, all my life as a teenager, I worked at a community center, I worked in the community, summer youth jobs. We had all those things that helped keep me out of trouble, helped me buy my Reebok pumps that I needed, you know, back in the 90s, all of those things, because my parents just couldn't afford it. And so the need is even greater than it was when I was a teenager in our community. And so this is a means to help, an attempt to help to provide an opportunity for young people to stay focused, stay positive, and to appropriately generate revenue and money through the course of the summer. Again, this is an idea. It's something that's, I don't think's ever really been done, so there's going to be some questions, and legitimately so. Bringing it up for dialogue, not because I have all the answers, but because I know collectively we have all the answers. And so, again, the initial, the initiative today is to get the money moved from our, transferred to a general line, a general government line item, so that as the formation of the initiative takes more shape, the money will be available, and we can also go out and generate revenue by saying we already have a pot available of $7,000 that we want to grow and multiply to put our young people to work. This is a multi-pronged thing where, yes, it's putting young people to work, but it's also allowing our, several of our nonprofits who are willing to work and operate as host or work sites for these young people to be able to have some of their needs met through the course of the summer that maybe they couldn't afford to have summer workers, whether it be outside landscaping or inside painting and those types of things. So it's a win-win in concept for the entire community. Again, today's effort is to, to wanting to move the money and to make the transfer, and then in order to disperse and distribute the money, then it's going to take other councilmatic action. I want to get this moved so that that councilmatic action doesn't roll us into July and we're halfway through with the summer before we even get started. Finally, again, more details will be finalized, but a means of facilitating this and the checks being cut and the payroll component is going to be done by the city. There will be application process that the young people would have to fill out an application and go through those steps. There's also a training component to this, like, how do you fill out an application? How do you do this? How do you interview? And so, again, that's the initiative. Next week, there's going to be a full presentation including, in writing, including nonprofits who are already willing to partner, businesses that have already agreed to participate financially or even as a work site. And so that will be presented to council for, before we have to go through the process of voting to release the money to do anything further. Today, again, we just want to transfer, and this is a good effort to show the community. And it's not, it's not to show the community, but it is to say that this is something that we see that we can do to help have a tangible impact positively on our youth through the course of the summer. And so that's a synopsis, very long, I guess, but where the idea generated from and some of the next steps to make it more solid and more able to be released, the money released to that budget.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mr. Evans?
President? Curtis, as I understand, you've got a concept here that you still need to work out the details with in terms of who's going to employ the folks and how people would contribute to it, et cetera. And your proposal is not to, is not to release the money at this point, but merely to say that the city is willing to put this up subject to putting the rest of the business plan together.
Absolutely.
Crossing the Ts and dotting the Is and being able to present something to not only neighborhood centers and others, but also to potential donors.
Absolutely.
That would contribute to this. So, you know, I support it in the spirit that it's a work in progress. I think this is an example where sometimes government can get so hung up in the details that by the time we finally get it right, the thing that we're trying to help has passed us by. And, you know, summer in Erie comes quickly and leaves quickly. So that's why I think it's appropriate for us to waive the rules to at least give you the opportunity between now and the next meeting, which is about three weeks from now, to get this thing flushed out. And if you do, then I think we'll have something we all feel good about, and if for some reason we can't, then we've not done anything other than explored it. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Anyone else?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mersky.
I, first off, I want to say that I think that Councilman Jones has a good idea but an incomplete plan. They say that haste makes waste, and I feel like we're rushing into something without any details. When I asked questions, who was going to pay the students? Would it be the city or would it be the service, the service agency? I couldn't get a solid answer. When I asked, who is going to hire the kids, the city or the agency? I couldn't get a solid answer. When I asked, how many hours will the kids work? I couldn't get a solid answer. As a matter of fiscal policy, I think transferring public money to a new program with no oversight would be irresponsible use of taxpayer money. At the end of the year, when our bills have already been paid, and if there's extra money that we had left over in the fund reserve, that would be a different story. Or if we budgeted for it, that would be another story, and there was a plan available for us to examine and know what we're spending the money on. My concerns are that we're establishing a program with no plan for sustainability. What's going to happen in the following years? Who's going to fund this? Is this going to become a city responsibility to then provide money year after year for another program when we're cutting money to our centers already? And it cuts into our professional services budget with seven months to go. It wipes it out. And I, you don't know what's going to happen in the next seven months, six months of the year in terms of professional services that we may need. I would be more comfortable with either putting this in the budget for next year or if we waited on this until the plan was fleshed out. There's not enough guarantees of fiscal oversight. There's too many unanswered questions, and I have to be responsible to the taxpayers, and I think that I have to vote my conscience on this, so I rise in opposition to this. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
This is my ninth, ninth year serving on council, and an idea of this nature has never come up. It's an opportunity for us, council, to say, "We've taken some money out of our budget to work, provide jobs." No matter how much money each kid gets, we keep them off the street. They're working in a community center, they're working at the Hispanic Council, wherever they are, Boys and Girls Club, wherever they are. We can work out all the little things. We give money thousands, 200,000, 250,000, and there's not one of us up here know everything about it. We just know just enough to say it's a good thing. This is about kids, $7,000. We're talking about seed money. Seed money. That means if 7,000 is here, we ask this business, we ask Erie Insurance, we tell them about, "We've got 7,000 seed money, we need another thousand from you." We may get it. People will give when you are helping yourself, and that's what we're doing. I believe helping these young people is more important than going to another conference, a lot more important. I support the idea, I support the concept. We will get all that information. We're saying, "Put the money there, it's on hold until we start getting the commitments." Time's running out. They'll be out of school soon. We need to make haste. We need to make it work for these young folks. We have to know how much money we have and how many young people we have to work with. It's an ideal program. It has to start somewhere. Seed money is like growing the flower from seed. You don't have all the flower until the seeds start going, till the roots get strong. It'll get stronger every year, and maybe we can put it in the general budget. Excellent program. I think it's great.
I'd just like to add, one day I was a young kid and Holy Rosary Bingo, selling coffee if you got a nickel tip. Ma'am, and it added up, two nights a week. Some of those nice summer nights where you'd rather be playing ball in the park or whatever, you had to go to work. Well, there I am, eight years old, 10 years old, I'm going, "Sorry, guys, I got to go. I'm going to work." You make five bucks, you're five bucks richer than them guys playing in the park. And paper boy, how many paper boys are out there nowadays? It's more adults than it is kids. These kids need a reason to wake up in the morning. How many people know, I mean, I raised, well, my wife raised four kids, I was just there, but after two years or two weeks of summer vacation, they're bored. Well, they have a reason to wake up in the morning, go pedal papers or go find a job or have a job that takes up a couple hours a day, as well as other city rec programs. I know my girl's got up, this boy's got up for the tennis programs and stuff. Those are great programs. This is just another added program that the city is offering at a discount price. We're talking $7,000 to start this thing off. Sure, there's going to be a few bugs. We'll get, we'll work through that. I'm so confident of that. Bottom line, kids need something to do. If we can help give 10, 20, who knows how many kids, a job two times a week, three times a week, or five days a week, it's a good program. I am for it 100%. Thank you.
Mr. Clem?
Call for the question. Voting on the resolution is read. Mr. Brennan? Mr. Evans? Mrs. Rancozzo? Mr. Jones? Mr. Mersky?
No.
Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarski? Motion is adopted, a six and a one. Okay, that concludes the agenda as prepared for this evening's meeting, Mr. President. If there's no other business, motion for adjournment. City Council now adjourn. 9:02 PM. Mr. Winarski, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mrs. Rancozzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon.